Mr. Denae, will you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
CV, here. Breckus, Zadra, Delgado.
Here.
George, absent. Jordan, Keschel.
Before we go to approval of the agenda, we have no pulled items. We have no proclamations today, no presentation. At 12:15, we have public hearings on item F1 and F2. That means they can be held afterwards. There is no public hearing tonight. Any other changes anybody wants to make of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. You have to do public comment prior to any action item on an agenda, so that needs to go first, sir.
Even before we approve the agenda? Okay, we'll do that first. Mr. Ed Hawkins, Public Comment Section.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Ward 4, NAB, Chair. Just wanted to say you're looking good, Mr. Mayor. I want to welcome the new crew we have up here. Great to see you. Purpose of me speaking just for the few moments right here is we finished up our bus stop out there that we've been fighting for, for over a year. They'll orientate the shelter here pretty soon. I want to thank Tina Wu and Julie Masterpool with RTC. Thanks.
My name's Chris Olberg, lifelong resident of City of Reno. Welcome, new council members, and I'm glad you recovered well, Mr. Keschel.
Thank you.
I have an ongoing problem, which has been ongoing for 15 years. This is the new roof that Home Depot's putting on their building, bright white. It says in their conditions that it must be the same color tan that it is. They're putting on new skylights, which are reflecting into our homes. Apparently, according to the code and everybody I've talked to, including your office, this is stopped. And I'm going to guarantee you this is going to stop. They're not going to blind us out. On a secondary note, I want my trees put back on the agenda now that we have a final survey, and you guys are not aware of any of this fight that's been going on forever. I gave the City of Reno an easement behind my home. They came in, and you see my nice little present I brought you. Those were put there because Home Depot committed fraud against the city and did not build a wall behind our homes. And there's four of us that didn't get one. So I planted those trees 15 years ago to stop the Walmart participants and the Home Depot participants from coming across my yard. The City of Reno came in my backyard after I granted them an easement and cut down trees I planted 15 years ago. And I'm not a very happy man. I think we've resolved the roof. I want the trees back on the agenda, because somebody cut down $10,000 worth of 15 years of trees I planted to protect my property against the violation of fraud committed by Home Depot, and you know that's true, sir.
We'll have city staff work on it and get involved with you. Ginny Nix? Ginny Nix? Oh, you don't want to speak. Here to support nullification of the NDAA. Ted Levatter?
Thank you, City Council. Good to see everybody. My name is Ted Levatter. I am here today to talk to you guys about placing nullification of Sections 1021 and 1022 of the National Defense Authorization Act on a future agenda. This issue deserves a formal public hearing, which can only occur with your support. Other liberty-loving states, counties, and municipalities have already nullified these unconstitutional provisions and can provide the basic frameworks for us to do the same here in Reno. For those of you who don't know, the NDAA was signed by President Obama on December 31, 2011, despite his, quote, "having serious reservations with certain provisions of the document." Obama's concerns were provisions in Sections 1021 and 1022, which would allow future presidents to indefinitely detain American citizens without charge or trial. This consolidation of power violates our Fifth Amendment rights to due process, as well as the Posse Comitatus Act, which is intended to protect U.S. citizens from their military force. Recent judicial proceedings reveal that the executive branch of the federal government is very interested in ensuring the survival of these provisions. When a New York judge placed an injunction on indefinite detention, she informed government attorneys that if they were currently holding anyone under these provisions, they would be held in contempt of court. Within 24 hours, federal attorneys had filed an appeal and the injunction was lifted. Many journalists and activists have speculated that the rapid response from the president's administration means that the United States government is or has detained American citizens under these provisions. If the federal government is no longer willing to uphold the Constitution, the burden falls on the people to defend their rights. Please follow the lead of other forward-thinking cities by taking the steps necessary to nullify Sections 1021 and 1022 of the National Defense Authorization Act. I'm asking you to place the NDAA on an agenda so we can have an open and frank discussion about what our nullification options are, and as a way to affirm the city's commitment to the public participation process. You'll not only be hearing from myself, but many other community members today, asking you to take a serious look at this issue. By placing it on the agenda, you can affirm the city's commitment to being responsive to its constituents' concerns. One last note, on December 15, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., across the street from City Hall here, Panda, the People Against the National Defense Authorization Act are going to be hosting a Bill of Rights Day of Celebration. We're inviting all citizens down to celebrate the Bill of Rights and to raise awareness about the -- what some see as an attack on our constitutionally-protected rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Holland?
I always have a visual and...
You always have, Eric. Thank you.
I don't know if this will work. Can you make this work, perhaps? Shine a light? Is it just too...
Yeah, she can try to do that.
All right, there's the good part. Okay, I'm going to do that part. Okay, this... My name is Eric Holland, and I want to congratulate those of you recently elected, I think. Good luck. I actually became very involved in this same issue that Teddy brought up this year, and my focus changed from local politics to this issue. I also am here to ask the City Council to take a -- to put this NDAA issue on a future I have all of those concerns that were just -- I don't need to repeat them, but I feel like the Statue of Liberty has abandonment issues. So that's all I'm going to say today, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. And this is -- I talked to you about this about a year ago, remember, Mayor Keschel? And I'm glad you're feeling better, too.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Carol Feinberg?
Good afternoon, and my name is Carol Feinberg. I'm a resident of Ward 5, Reno, and welcome to all the new council members. I'm also with Panda, People Against National Defense Authorization Act. You'll be hearing from and have heard from a couple of others who feel the same way as we -- as I do, and I also represent a group of over 100 who feel exactly the same way. The National Defense Authorization Act, which can arrest, detain indefinitely, and even put to death U.S. citizens without due process. This is a violation of our U.S. Constitution and our Nevada Constitution. At this point, all we are asking is that you consider putting nullification of NDAA on the agenda. It's something that deserves an open forum, as others have said before me, and I really -- I just urge you to do that. A nullification is a perfectly legal and acceptable and rightful remedy for these abuses. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey Fabian?
I don't...
You don't want to speak? Okay, I see. NDAA nullification on future agenda. Christopher Corbett, you wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Honorable Reno City Council, my name is Christopher Corbett, Nevada State Coordinator for Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA. This is my second visit here. I was here last month. If you're here in support of NDAA nullification, would you please stand? I would like to thank Ted Levatter, Carol Feinberg, and everyone who has contributed by making calls to their elected representatives in an effort to raise awareness of the NDAA's threat to liberty. Panda is a national nonpartisan grassroots organization founded in late January 2012. Panda has quickly grown to more than 90 chapters in 39 states, with three chapters in Nevada. Panda is committed to the nullification at the state and local levels of government of the unconstitutional authorizations of indefinite detention and assassination of all persons on U.S. soil under military detention without charge, trial, or access to legal counsel as authorized under the NDAA. Today, the government can accuse you, me, or anyone else they don't like of being a threat or belligerent, whatever that means, and detain them without having to prove their case in a court of law. The NDAA violates at least 23 articles of and amendments to the U.S. and Nevada constitutions. To date, 16 states and 32 local governments have introduced nullification legislation, most recently Texas, with six states, including Utah and Virginia, and 16 local jurisdictions, including Berkeley, California, nullifying the NDAA and restoring freedom and liberty as the sovereign right of the people. Why can't Reno do the same? The United States Constitution, although the most important founding document, is only a piece of paper and cannot defend itself. It is the responsibility of every freedom-loving individual within this room to ceaselessly defend constitutional rights without wavering. Each member of this council has sworn an oath to uphold, defend, and protect both the U.S. and Nevada constitutions. I urge the Reno City Council to place nullification of the NDAA's unconstitutional authorizations on a future agenda for further discussion. By placing the NDAA on a future agenda, we can openly discuss our options for nullification, raise public awareness, engage the electors' interest in defending liberty. What is more important, I ask, than protecting constitutional rights which 1.3 million Americans have died fighting for? Is a baseball stadium more important than liberty? Are liquor licenses more important than due process? I would like to know what is more important than protecting mine and our constitutional rights? It is the council's duty to nullify unconstitutional laws. Benjamin Franklin said, "They who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety," end quote. What we are not willing to defend, we will surely lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark McKell? We can hear you, Mark.
Welcome, council members. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Corporal. My name is Mark McKell. I'm a concerned Reno resident. I was involved in a drunk driving crash, and this being the holiday season, I believe people should -- well, I got in the car with a drunk driver, and we rolled eight times, 100 feet, anyways, and I got landed on my head, and I don't want to see that happen to anyone else in this holiday season, especially our Christmas season, holiday season, whatever. I'm not political. I just want to be sure it doesn't happen to anybody else. I have to use this, and I use a wheelchair sometimes. It sucks, and I just want to be sure it doesn't happen to anyone else.
Thank you very much, Mark. Frances Lane? Frances.
Glad to see you're doing well.
Thank you, sir.
Iron Nation, I just wanted to tell you...
Identify yourself for the record.
I'm Frances Lane. I'm a member of Iron Nation Motorcycle Club. I just come before you to tell you a little bit about Iron Nation. We were established in '04. Ever since then, we've been a nonprofit organization. We raise money for the Nevada Military Alliance Fund. That fund is raised for military families that are in need. Since then, we've able to raise well over $100,000 in this fund. We've been going on in this organization for the past eight years now without incident with the help of our escort service through the Reno and Sparks. The men that help out in the escort service have talked to me numerous times, said that they would gladly donate their time if they could, because they believe in the event. However, every year, we have to pay for their escort service, and this is money that is taken out of the military families that are in need. I just wish that we could have your support through this organization and probably help out in any way that you can in the funds that we have to pay for that event to happen.
As long as we know about them a little ahead of time, I think we can work something out.
It's every year? It's the second Saturday?
About six months before. I think there's a set of regulations, but if you'll get with our Special Events Committee and spell it out for them, I think we want to help you. Y'all have done a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just I want to point out that if you're seeking sponsorships, applications are actually due this Friday, and you can get the forms at Reno.gov.
Okay, and it states in there in those forms that you're -- we have to open all our books to the city and let them look at our books and our fundings and everything else? On the registration forms?
I would defer to our special events staff on that.
For the record, Kayden Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. Yes, the speaker is correct. One of the conditions in the application is that anyone seeking sponsorship through our special event sponsorship policy is required to make certain financial disclosures.
I'm wondering why is that? Because no other year have we had to have proof, since we are a nonprofit organization, that we are regulated by the state of Nevada to, at any time, to be -- open our books to them.
Frances, what we'll do is we'll get with staff, and we'll work with you on that. We've worked with you in the past without doing a lot of that, and thank you for coming this morning. But you can get ahold of staff, and we'll sit down and work with you. Y'all do a great job for our veterans, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Except Frances.
Yes, sir.
Somebody made fun of me when I was on my tricycle motorcycle, huh? How come they making fun of you? I thought it was the Mayor Martini behind me.
That was because it was up on a truck.
Oh, no, that was the other time. They don't let me go on the streets. Thanks, Frances.
We missed you this year.
I'm sorry I couldn't be there. All right. Now we'll go to approval of the agenda?
Uh, him.
Excuse me. Oh, gosh, I forgot Sam. Mr. Denae?
Sam Denae, the philanthropical encyclopedia of Reno government. Everything that Sam does, from watchdogging government to 1,467 entertaining concerts for the seniors and veterans, is done philanthropically, and that means for free, for charity. Sam, that's me, is an Air Force Academy graduate. Sam spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. Since Sam's airline was blown out of business over Lockerbie, that's Pan American World Airways, was blown out of business by the terrorists, Sam has dedicated the rest of his life to watchdogging government, government period, mostly Reno government. And all I can say, as I look around the dais, all I can say is, the vote riggers have spoken. And some people think that Sam is sometimes a little bit harsh on government, and the only reason Sam has to come across harshly when watchdogging government is because Reno has the most dysfunctional media, and I mean newspaper, television, and radio. Reno has the most dysfunctional government in all of America. Excuse me, media, not the government. The government's trying its best, and actually, the government would be doing a lot better if the dysfunctional media would report, would have been reporting Sam's soothsaying truths through the years. For instance, we can start with this building right here. We have this big game of bait and switch going on right now. A while ago, it was blaming the fire department for everything, the firefighters for everything. Now they're going to blame the baseball stadium for all of our problems. The biggest problem, one of the biggest problems, is this building we're working in here, where they, these folks here, sit up on the 15th floor and eat their caviar and drink their champagne and count their bloated salaries, while we, the peons, sit down here and wonder what's going on. As far as the baseball stadium goes, part of me, I've spoken for and against the baseball stadium more than all of the citizens added together, and part of me wants to see the city pay those people a million dollars a year, and you know why? Because if the city, if this government has that million dollars, they would just find some other boondoggle to waste it on, because I've seen it over and over again. And don't let them tell you about the general fund and what they want to do with the fire department, because I've seen what they have done to the fire department. As I close out, I've got to say something about this headline here. The unemployment insurance organization does not have enough money, so they're going to charge the employers a little bit more money, but they're actually in charging the employees, because that's a mandatory insurance that is paid to protect workers when they get laid off from their jobs. The problem with all this money, most of this money that they're increasing to, is going to the bloated salaries of the lawyers and the worker, the referees, to be able to not pay, to not pay the unemployment insurance to the workers who are laid off from their jobs.
Thank you very much.
And it's a fact. Too much money is going to the bloated administration and lawyers.
Thank you very much. Becky Stock?
Thank you, City Council. My name is Becky Stock, and I am the Project Director for Nevada Land Trust, and I -- Nevada Land Trust has been around for 14 years, and for the past 10, we've been part of the Swan Lake Nature Study Area Advisory Board. We are one of eight, and I'm here today to ask for your support in passing the Swan Lake Master Plan. It's been passed by many of our advisory boards to date. Our partners include the BLM, Washoe County, City of Reno is one of our partners, Audubon, Washoe County School District, Nevada Department of Wildlife, just name a few, oh, and the military, the National Guard. The Swan Lake Nature Study Area is an important bird area. More than 150 different species of birds use the Swan Lake Nature Study Area throughout the year. It's 1,200 acres out in Lemon Valley, and it's a beautiful place. And thanks to having it on your agenda item today, I believe we had some promotional from KUNR. They did a story on it. So I'm really happy that your Parks Department decided to put it on the agenda, because in addition to hoping that you will pass this agenda item, it also is very helpful to the cause of the Swan Lake Nature Study Area. And lastly, because I know this is very important, the Swan Lake Master Plan does not include fiscal impact to any of the partners. We work together to raise funds through grants or different sources of revenue that might be available to the individual partners, but there is no requirement upon any of the partners to pony up to a budget. We all work together. It's a collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? Fill so, filled out a blue card, but right now, I'm going to close the public comment section, bring it back to the table for discussions. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one announcement that I want to make for the public and actually for the council. We are launching a citizen survey. We're seeking input from Reno residents and community leaders. We want to gather their input, what their priorities are, what their perspectives and opinions on various issues are, and find out whether or not we're meeting or exceeding their expectations. This is a, the first part of a four-part, four-part process that we're going through. We're asking internal stakeholders, employees, city leadership, and what we'll do is we'll gather up these results, we'll compare to other municipalities, look for best practices, and then we will actually bring this information back to the council during the strategic planning session, which will be on January 23. And then from this input, the council will be able to develop the strategic plan for the city moving forward, establish priorities based on this feedback. The survey will be available beginning tomorrow, December 6, through December 20. We will send out emails to the database that we have through Reno Direct. It will be featured on our website. We'll also push it out through Facebook and Twitter, and citizens can also call Reno Direct at 334-4636. So if citizens do not have access to a computer or other means, they can, they can simply call in through Reno Direct and fill the survey out that way. So we'd encourage all of our citizens to participate in the survey and give us their feedback, so that we can set our priorities moving forward and give us some idea of how we're performing in the community. Okay?
Sounds like a great idea.
The city's website is Reno.gov for those listening, so you can go to Reno.gov starting tomorrow, and it'll be featured there on the website.
Yes.
And the phone number for Reno Direct again is 334-4636. Okay?
Anything else you want to bring, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, one other thing that I want to say, I did want to just recognize the staff. We had many of our staff working over the weekend due to the rains, protecting the city. I will say, we have a very dedicated staff, and they were well-prepared, well-organized, and I just want to recognize them for their efforts.
They did an outstanding job getting prepared. Glad we didn't need them, but everybody did a fantastic job. All right, we'll move on now to approval of the agenda. Any changes? Well, let me go through. There are no proclamations, pulled items, presentations, public comment, we've already done. 12:15 and after, we'll hear items F1 and F2. Any other changes you want to make? Chair, entertain a motion. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for November 14. Any changes?
No.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for discussion? You got something? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, cash disbursement. Anybody got any disclaimers or anything? Chair, entertain a motion.
No.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll go to the consent agenda. We have a public comment first. Mr. Sam Denae?
Sam Denae, the philanthropical encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam Dene, the philanthropical encyclopedia of Reno government. And what we have here today, right now, is the consent agenda, where these folks are going to vote on a whole bunch of items. Actually, today, it's not very many items, but they're gonna vote on several items, all in one fell swoop, generally without even discussion. And today, today's items are relatively mundane in housekeeping. I do want to speak in favor of this one alcohol license. Every week, I come down here, and you're handing out something on the order of five to 15 alcohol and packaged liquor license, usually without any discussion, and I maybe should not even say anything, but just in case you are thinking of discussing this particular one, I'm speaking in favor of item E2, E12, which is a packaged liquor license for the gopher market. I want them to be able to get that license. All right, I also want to speak on E3. Somebody's got a phone call. It's not me. Maybe it's the governor trying to get ahold of me. Is it? No. Okay. The staff report is approval of an extension of a ground lease agreement with the Grand Sierra for the location of Station 21. It sounds rather mundane, but a quick little background relates this to the baseball stadium issue. Several years ago, almost five, well, five years ago now, the city and all of its brilliance tore down a perfectly good fire station over there. Beautiful, not beautiful, but a very workable fire station was torn down in order to accommodate the baseball stadium, and I spoke against that adamantly, over and over and over again. I said, "Find a way to work around tearing down that fire station. It's just crazy to tear down a perfectly good fire station." You tore it down anyway, thanks to the fact that the media would once again refuse to report Sam's erudite comments. At any rate, you tore that down, and you created, this is for the background for the people on YouTube who might be watching this later, you tore that big fire station down, and then you built two temporary fire stations. And those temporary fire stations seem to be working all right. They're Quonset huts, basically, but they seem to be working all right. But they theoretically were temporary. That was five years ago. Now you're asking to extend the lease on the one over there at the Grand Sierra for another five years. And the good news is, our government organizations are only gonna be paying $1 a year, a token amount of lease money, so that's no big deal. So in other words, you are just continuing this quote-unquote temporary fire station for potentially another five years, and I've not heard anything about building another fire station. Not that I'm actually supporting another fire station, because this was, this one seems to be functioning all right. So I'm not necessarily speaking in support of this, but I kind of am speaking in support of it.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment firms, bring it back to the table. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone wants to pull for detailed discussion?
Madam Vice Mayor, I do have a question about E5.
E5, okay. Anyone else? Motion for approval of all but E5. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E5?
My question is, and I regret I did not find the staff report that I think was put on our desk yesterday, this was a late addendum, I'm just wondering, maybe from Mr. Manager, why are we approving a $10,000 purchase? And just, you know, a lot of times consent, you know, you have the authority, I think even a department head has the authority, to make a, you know, sign off on an item of this small level of...
This is actually, and we'll let staff speak to it in more detail, this is a self-imposed fee that the downtown casinos assessed to themselves, taking action at the legislature in the last term, and the money is to go for capital improvements of the projects, the facilities that impact the business that they receive. And it is administered by the city. It is money that they alone put into the pot, and we then administer it for them.
Madam Mayor, if I might just add on to that, the answer is, normally, you wouldn't see these items for this amount, but because this is the $2 surcharge, I mean, that's the only reason it's coming back to the council, is I think, I think maybe it's a statute that requires it, actually.
Alan Tryon, Associate Civil Engineer, it requires a 2/3 positive vote to pass from council.
So, and I do remember the history. The city didn't have a BDR, some people went down to the legislature and said, "Tax us, and we'll put money into the bowling stadium," even though the city owns it, owns money on that. I understand that. So, a part of that statute that was brought down says that any purchase has to have 2/3 of us? I mean, this is...
That's correct. That's the way I understand it.
How much is this kicking off a year, this tax? And how much can we expect to have to pay? You know, how many items, can we do them all in one foul swoop? And does that tax expire at any time?
I can't speak to all that. Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Robert Chizal, Finance Director for the City of Reno. It wasn't in the statute, the imposition of the 2/3 was put on by the council itself when we set up the $2 surcharge for the city council. The money that is generated is approximately $2 million, $2.1 million a year is generated each year from the $2 surcharge. And just to get you a little history, we did do the Hall of Fame museum down on the first floor of the bowling stadium. There was some fix-up to the city center across the street, and this is to begin work on the video board that is in the stadium itself where the bowling lanes are, and we'll be bringing back, of course, more as we go along in that project. And there's also an additional project to create additional bowling lanes down where the restaurant used to be on the other side. The restaurant was removed, and bowling lanes are being put in. And this is all subject to the agreement we have with the USBC to continue the tournaments coming to the city of Reno, and so this is just one of the projects that they had identified as part of the requirement of extending the contract.
Okay. I understand. It's just, you know, $2.1 million a year at $10,000 a crack, that's a lot of agenda items, you know? I mean, obviously, maybe we won't see ones this small, but maybe we would want to rethink that self-imposed situation at some point, maybe? I don't, I don't know. Just a thought.
But for this item?
Oh, I'll make the motion to approve. I just was a little confused about the procurement nature of it.
Can we do that?
Madam Chair, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We had a council member step out for a moment that hurt the item, so you need to have at least five people present to vote on it to get your 2/3s vote. So, you may want to revisit this item in a moment.
That's illustrating the point.
We'll move on with the agenda, move to public hearings. Item F1, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent? Any public comment?
I do have one.
Ed Hawkins?
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Chair of the Ward 4 NAB North Valleys. We took a look at this project for the Jackson Station, as well as the annexation. We didn't have any adverse comments from the neighborhood with what's taking place, and I'm just here to ask you to approve this. I've worked with code enforcement over the last couple of years, trying to get trucks not to park over by Scolari's and a few other places in the North Valleys. This is the right place to put this truck area. Actually, when it annexes, it will come into City of Reno, and then they'll do their thing as far as remodel. We want to see this, go ahead with the approval to annex the City of Reno, and then the subsequent approval of their remodel and all. But I'm just here on behalf of the NAB, saying that we did not receive any adverse comments. Our meeting went well with the construction site, as well as the owner, and I just want the city council to approve this annexation for Jackson. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Any discussion? May we have the reading of the ordinance?
Thank you. This is Bill Number 6836, an ordinance annexing to and making part of the City of Reno certain specifically described territory being plus or minus 3.3 acres of property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Red Rock Road and Silver Lake Road. In the special planning area, Reno Stead Joint Corridor, planned general commercial land use designation, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Since Dwight is not here, I motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Madam Chair, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. As part of this annexation, there are 10 criteria in the staff report, and the motion should include that it's based upon findings, you can meet those criteria.
Since Dwight isn't present, based on evaluation of the 10 annexation criteria in the Reno Municipal Code, I move to approve the requested annexation by ordinance in zoning map amendment to establish City of Reno zoning on the property. I move to refer Bill Number to the Committee of the Whole.
And the second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item Number 2F. Any questions?
You know, I did have a question at caucus about this, and a memo was provided, and I thank staff for that. I just, I just want to know, now that we're requiring annexation upon construction of single-family homes or hookup to sewer, we kind of run the risk of getting into an islandy situation, and we have the sphere, I just got a map up in my office of the sphere, there's so many different pockets. I mean, obviously, this meets contiguity, but do you see in this area an ability for some sort of islandy situations? Or are we prohibited? Are we, we're allowed to create islands, aren't we? I mean, islands are gonna be so important now that we have fire divorced and just, you know, the, we're not seeing the big annexations, we're seeing the little annexations.
Madam Chair, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. On behalf of, since this is a public hearing, if we could have the clerk indicated that proper notice has been given and the public hearing is open before we continue with this matter.
Proper notice was given, and there was no correspondence received.
Yeah, and let the record reflect that the public hearing is now open, and then we can continue with the response from staff.
We're still on F1?
Two.
I'm sorry. Or F2?
Well, this one isn't, I mean, it's kind of a general question. This one is not very islandy, right?
Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. Actually, within our sphere of influence, we do have the unincorporated Washoe County lands, and under NRS, we're not allowed to create certain islands. Just an example on F1 that was just approved, as you can see, that this is more of a peninsula of county land surrounded by city property, or city limits. So, this parcel right here, basically, is a peninsula of county land within the city of Reno.
Are there any other questions? No? May we have the reading of the ordinance?
This is Bill Number 6837, an ordinance annexing to and making part of the City of Reno certain specifically described territory being plus or minus 1 acres of property located plus or minus 165 feet northeast of the intersection of Yee-Haw Way and Desert Way, 8260 Desert Way, in the LR, excuse me, LLR 2.5 perin large lot residential, 2.5 acres in perin zone, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
I motion to approve. Based on the evaluation of the 10 annexation criteria in the Reno Municipal Code, I move to approve the requested annexation by ordinance, and I move to refer Bill Number to the Committee of the Whole.
Motion and a...
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We can now move back to Item E5.
E5? Oh, oh, because we got our fifth person.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve E5.
Motion...
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ordinances, ordinance adoption, G1.
This is Ordinance Number 6270, ordinance amending Ordinance Number 6213 for the purpose of establishing regular council meeting dates and times for the 2013 calendar year and the month of January 2014, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
I move to refer.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This is an adoption, so it's a motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt.
And did I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, we're on resolutions. Resolution H1.
Resolution Number 7793, resolution accepting streets, dedication map of Desert Way, portions of Desert Way.
A motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H2.
Resolution Number 7794, resolution accepting streets, Golden Hills Phase 1, portions Calvary Circle, Mule Circle, Gold Mine Drive, Gold Mine Court, Golden Spur Court, Bull Rider Drive, Bull Rider Court, Trail Rider Drive, Topiano Drive, and Bronx Court.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H3.
Resolution Number 7795, resolution accepting streets, Golden Hills Phase 2A, portions of Calvary Circle.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H4.
Resolution Number 7796, resolution making a provisional order regarding the acquisition and improvement of six street construction units and one sidewalk construction unit consisting of 28 street segments within the proposed City of Reno, Nevada, 2013 Special Assessment District Number 1.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance introduction, I1.
Madam Chair, do we want to do H5?
H5.
Oops, I did miss one. Thank you very much.
Good, I'm glad you did.
Item H5.
Resolution Number 7797, resolution to adopt the Section 3 Plan to comply with 24 CFR Part 135 of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968, Section 3.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll do ordinance introduction. I1.
This is Bill Number 6838, an ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code Title 8, entitled Public Peace, Safety, and Morals, Chapter 8.23, entitled Parks and Recreation, Section 8.23.070, by providing additional grounds to exclude persons from engaging in criminal conduct from city parks, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Community development, J1. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval?
I move to approve. Staff recommendation?
And second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. J2, we had public comment on this earlier, seeing none now. Motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. K1, Boards and Commissions approvals. Northeast Neighborhood Advisory Board?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh... Excuse me, I'm sorry, oh, you're going, what was the number you're doing? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
K1, Northeast Advisory Board?
Oh, no, I don't. You know what, I'm sorry, I didn't get that, was there a list of people? Okay, I got the one pertaining to the council. Well...
Looks like there's somebody under that.
There's not anything in the northwest, the Ward 1 ward, so, you know, that's not of issue to me. So, I would, I'll defer to the others who have their wards mentioned here.
Who's northwest?
I believe these.
Now, do you have anybody you want to appoint, you want to continue to advertise?
Continue to advertise, I know we've had one or two.
Ward 3?
Looks like Barry Schuster. She's eligible and is interested in being reappointed, so I'd like to reappoint Barry Schuster to Ward 3 now.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Breckus, could you send that roster down?
Yes.
For access advisory?
Yes.
Senior Advisory?
There was, there was a member from the senior advisory that was recommended by the board at their last meeting, but I'm not seeing it in here.
Today, I'll be at their board.
So, let's go ahead and have this on the agenda for our meeting on the 12th, and we'll get...
Continue to advertise? Reno Access?
Yeah, that's what we were trying to find, so.
Access or senior citizen?
Access.
Okay. Do you have an appointment?
K1E.
Let's see, Vanessa Dixon? We would like to appoint her to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
No.
Correct.
Reno Access.
Reno Access.
I'm sorry, Vanessa Dixon is for the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Okay, yeah, correct, so Vanessa Dixon is for seniors.
Do you want to do the seniors, or you want to do the, let's do the seniors.
Do the seniors.
All right.
Take a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve Vanessa for Senior Advisory Committee?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. For the Reno Access Advisory Commission, Kristi Johnson?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. K1, for, this is a continuing item that we have on the agenda for boards and appointments.
Well, we received in our packets a table of some vacancies, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, so I guess we need to fill them. For myself, I'm willing to sit on the Nevada League of Cities Boards of Directors if someone wants to make a motion toward that, or has discussion. Anyone else want to sit on it?
Anybody else want on the League of Cities? Make a motion, or you running? I'll run. Does somebody give me a motion to...
I motion.
I have a motion. I have a second, all those in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm willing to sit on the Downtown Maintenance Special Assessment District Committee as well, since we have a vacancy there.
Any other motions for on that committee or anything? Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm willing to be an alternate on the Tahoe Airport Authority Board, too. Did we do that already?
It's highlighted as, as empty.
Okay, no problem, I'm just trying to help out.
We do need an alternate.
Okay, Oscar, why don't you do that? I mean, if you have an interest, I'll certainly defer to you.
Okay, let's just say, yeah?
You want that, Oscar?
Yes, please.
Okay. Motion and second for Oscar?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no.
I'm willing to serve as the Recreation and Parks Commission liaison, if anyone, unless anyone else wants to.
Anybody else want on the Parks and Recreation? Have a motion and second? Have a motion?
Second.
I got a second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
In regards to a question at caucus, Madam Clerk prepared a memo stating that the RTC appointments are still in question because the appointments that were made on November 7th were to fill existing terms, and furthermore, there wasn't specification of which individuals were appointed to fill which terms. And so, that needs to be specified. I would make the point that since our member's seat on, you know, mid-November, and the terms run to the end of the year, that perhaps there's some rethinking that should go on and get someone who's, you know, not going to term out during the term of their appointment on RTC. So, I'm bringing that up for the good of the order. But we do need to take some action in defining what term, what terms. Do you all get the memo?
Sharon run the meeting. I'm going to make a motion that we continue with the appointment of Sharon Zadra and Dwight Dorch to the RTC.
There's a motion?
That's mine.
I think we need to specify who fills which seat.
Mr. Mayor, I think that the clarification is that the term of Dan Guston was due to expire 12/31/2013, and the term of Dave Iasi was due to expire 12/31/2012. So you have terms that were expiring at different, at different times, so I think...
So now, where would the 2013 and 1/2012?
Correct. So we just need to specify, it sounds like we need to specify which member takes which term, and I'm looking to Tracy to...
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Yes, the city manager is accurate on that, and also, who would start on January 1st, 2013, to fill the 2012 expired term?
The 2012 expired term?
Yeah, there's one that the clerk indicates actually expires at the end of this year, and that's where the confusion arose with the last appointment.
Okay, so it expires the 12, what do we, do we appoint for the 13, or what?
Yeah, what you need to do is...
Both of them for 13?
You could have the same member continue into 13 if that is the choice of city council, or you have the option to appoint another member for, starting January 1st, 2013.
Wouldn't that be after Sharon's, and then...
Then Mr. Dorch, continue. Is that the way it would be?
So, Mr. Mayor, you need, you need to appoint one to complete Dan Guston's term, which would be, which would be through 2013, and then you need to appoint another one to complete Dave's term and potentially continue.
Okay.
Unless the council chose to appoint someone else to start in January.
And Mr. Mayor, the point I'm making is that one of, either Sharon or Dwight will term out of council office...
In '14.
Before their seat on the RTC board terms out. Yesterday.
They won't be. They won't be, because they don't leave until '14.
They leave in November of '14.
No, they don't. Of '14, November of '14.
Yes, November of '14.
That's right. I'm appointing them both for 13.
Well, no, the term, because they're staggered, one's a one-year term and one's a two-year, one of those seats will go longer than their term in this office. And so I am making the point that if someone, we're going to appoint someone to a body, they should at least be able to serve out the term, so we don't get into this confusing situation. We have this time, who serves that last of the term? So I think one of the new people should sit on the RTC board.
We frequently do have issues where we fill in midterm.
Right.
Of the...
Of the one.
The various seats.
And that, what time, where, what is that time schedule?
We have one that will expire on December 13, we have another that will expire on, at the end of December of this year. So we have the option of, we need, what we need to do is identify one of the individuals whose term is due to expire and could be reappointed or replaced at the end of December of 13, and we need to fulfill, identify which one is in, the one that will end in December of this year, the end of this month, and...
With a continued...
If we want that person to continue beginning January 1.
That's the way I'd made my motion for Mr. Dorch and Ms. Zadra.
But then...
I'm going to put Dorch to end, or Zadra to end in 13, December 13. Is that the way it is? And then I want to appoint Mr. Dorch to finish out the term, but reappoint for the year of 13. January 13.
And typically, how long?
Then we can appoint you.
To January 13, with a reappointment for the, for the next term.
We have a motion on the table.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to continue.
Continue what?
I mean, it's...
What do you want to do?
I think, I know there's a motion on the table, can we, can we open discussion again?
We need a motion for second, and then discussion.
Okay, second.
Okay. Now, discussion.
Oscar, I think, had a question.
Yes, Oscar.
I was, I was answering, I just wanted to find out what the term length was for the people in RTC, and it's two years per person, so.
No, it's...
One and two. The two, yeah, I mean...
So if, so bring this all back, so Sharon would start, continue until 2013, correct? So that'll be the end of your term, so potentially, there'd be another open spot at the end of year, 2, 12, 2013, correct?
Correct.
The end of December, okay. We'd come back and appoint somebody for the year 14.
14.
For 14.
January 2, for January 2014.
So, just if I can try and maybe clarify this, so Councilwoman Zadra would take Councilman, or former Councilman Guston's term, which would expire 12/31/2013. Councilman Dorch would finish out Dave Iasi's term, which expires 12/31/2012, and if I understand the mayor's motion correctly, would then continue into the next term, which would expire 12/31 of 2014.
Correct.
And to further complicate things, if we choose to discuss someone sitting on a particular committee or board, we can bring that back up at any time, correct?
This is what I want to make sure that it's fair. I mean, I know Jenny really would like to sit on there, this is something she's passionate about, I want to just make sure that it's something that we can work on, and I know...
I'm very passionate about it, too, because I've been very involved with that, and it's very, very dear to my heart, too, but the other people, I think, should do it, they've waited.
Well, that's what I'm saying, once Sharon and Dwight are finished with their term, then it's something we can look at.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure we can make a mid-year appointment like March or something, I think they will serve out their term. I just, my point is, you know, in a parliamentary body, you know, committee seats are usually spread out, and just by nature, the fact that this goes out farther than someone's own term on this body, I think, to me, implies that maybe it's time for someone new to have a seat on it. So I won't support the motion. I am interested in sitting in RTC, I've made no, you know, I've made that very upfront, but I respect the decision-making of others.
And that's a bridge we can cross when we come to it. That's a bridge we can cross when we get there.
Any further discussion? So, the motion is for the term that will expire December 13, December of 2013, that was previously held by Dan Guston, will be filled by myself. The term that was previously held by Mr. Iasi, that will expire at the end of December of this year, and the motion includes that it will continue, the appointment will continue through December of 14, will be Mr. Dorch. That's the motion and second on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Four to one. Five to one, thank you.
Excuse me, but back on the appointments to boards and commissions, we do need alternates to EDON.
Alternates for what?
Alternates to EDON? I have an interest in this.
I make a motion that Neil may be an alternate to EDON. Do I have a second?
There are two alternates, if you wish someone else can, two alternates.
Two alternates?
So it's, it's Oscar and Neil.
Oscar is an actual member.
Me and, both of us are actual members.
Well, the other thing is, I have a conflict on the days that we do Building Enterprise Fund. Is there anyone here that would be willing to...
I'm willing to do that one.
Did we resolve EDON?
No, not yet.
No.
We had, what, we were going for clarity on this last time, EDON gives us one member seat.
Right.
One, and then we have two alternates. So this still isn't reading correctly.
And just move Oscar to the alternate, then, or Sharon, maybe Sharon would give it up, because...
I just began there.
Yeah, okay, well...
And have a couple of items that we've been working on.
Sure.
I'm fine with going as an alternate for EDON.
What'd you say, sir?
I'm okay with being an alternate for EDON.
Okay.
Not if we have one seat available.
Who else wants to be an alternate?
I'll do it.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I didn't hear who the second alternate was, though.
Hillary, did you say you want to be alternate?
Hillary.
So, move for the member to be Zadra, the two alternates to be Delgado and Shivi.
Right.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Building Enterprise Fund. If Hillary has a conflict, maybe Sharon, the alternate, could be the other liaison. Or I would do, I would take some role in that, I'm not, you know... I'll be the alternate and you'll be the liaison, then, okay, that sounds good.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
No, I don't know, is there, oh, I do have a conflict for Building Enterprise when they meet that day, so...
Jenny? Do you want to...
Are you okay with that?
I'll, I'll do it, I was just asking if Sharon wants to be the liaison, since she's been the alternate. Okay, and I'll be the liaison, okay, that's fine.
Is that a motion, and do I have a second for it?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any other appointments we need to make?
You know, I do have a question, Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk, why don't we have an alternate to District Board of Health? That's a pretty important board and body, and I know the rules all run by the rules of the body, but it would just seem to me that that's a pretty important body, not to have an alternate.
You can, you can definitely appoint an alternate.
Why don't you pull up and check the records and see if we can do that and bring it back for the next agenda?
Yeah, I mean, that's, they've got statutory authority and everything. And then, that's all I have.
Okay, any others?
You do, you need to...
I do have a question, I think we have special events and Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility where we need members, two members on each of those.
Correct.
Which ones are?
Special Events Subcommittee and the Trekkie Meadows Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee.
What is that committee? I mean, I don't know it's ever acted.
It says currently dormant.
It's been dormant for years.
Why don't you eliminate it and leave it dormant?
Motion to leave it dormant?
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye. What do you say, counsel?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. On the boards and commissions, I know that the council had cleared out the ones that were dormant, that we statutorily could clear out, so if this is still on the books, I would suggest that it's possibly a board or commission that needs to remain.
I don't know what it does, I've never, I mean, I've never heard of them doing anything, meeting or anything.
And, and we can do some research and bring it back to you, but I just didn't have that answer off the top of...
I think you ought to bring it back, there's a couple of them in there that I think we ought to get rid of, we don't need.
Yeah, and anything this council created by resolution or ordinance, you can take proper steps to close it down.
So we're left with Special Events Subcommittee, which regard, I feel regardless of its activity or inactivity, I, I would like...
So we're left with Special Events Subcommittee, which regard, I feel regardless of its activity or inactivity, I, I would like to be a member of this.
It's definitely an active committee.
It is an active.
Yeah, we just lost, we lost our two members.
I have a motion from Naomi, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
We need one more.
You need one more memo.
We need one more.
One more?
One more on that one.
Okay.
Special events?
Who wants it?
Everybody clamor.
I'll take special events.
I heard a motion for Oscar, do I have a second for Oscar?
Second.
I have a second for Oscar, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
We also need one for the Youth City Council, looks like on the back of the page here.
Okay.
I'm unavailable on Thursday nights.
Anybody for the, is that an alternate?
I have conflicts, I have conflicts as well, on this night.
Thursdays at 6:30, 4th Thursday of this, 6:30.
4th Thursday at 6:30.
Oscar's got a lot of experience with the youth, so I think we ought to make him a motion.
Can we appoint Dwight, since he's not here?
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think Oscar, even with the Boys and Girls Club, I think he'd be great on it.
I think that's a natural.
Is that a motion you're giving me?
I don't want to.
I don't mind.
I'd be more than happy to be a part of the Youth City Council.
I'll definitely do it.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
I'll definitely do it.
All right. Do I have a motion and second on the floor? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any others?
Uh, one just kind of, I don't know if it's called housekeeping, and we can open it for discussion. I was put on Tom Wharf, and after some public works meetings and discussions with Jenny, I think Jenny is a better fit for Tom Wharf. So I just make a motion to appoint Jenny.
Tom Wharf, the, just a little background, the group that's on Tom Wharf has made, has been talking about making a recommendation to the legislature to abolish that appointment, or abolish that committee, because it, it never meets with a quorum, or it never has anything. I mean, you go to a meeting and there might be, there's never a quorum. And that was created during the last legis, I think it was the last session of the legislature.
Are you sure you're talking about Tom Wharf and not the other one, the other water one down south?
I'm talking about the one in Reno.
The sewer treatment plant?
I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about the county's water company out south of town.
You're talking about the sewer treatment plant?
Uh, no, I'm talking about this whole region, unless I've got it mixed up or something. This was where the legislature, when we were trying to merge and do different, maybe I need to find out more.
This is the sewer treatment plant that we share with Sparks.
Tom Wharf is?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm wrong.
Yeah.
I'm wrong. Okay, who wants it?
I'll, I'll do it, if you're willing to.
Good. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. One that I was upset, not upset, one I was disappointed that I was removed off of was the, uh...
The Western Water Commission, is that where?
Oh, no, that's the one I was talking about.
Yeah, I think so.
That's, that's a do-nothing committee.
And I think Naomi was appointed to that, right?
I was.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Apparently I've got a lot of influence.
That's the one they were talking, Tom Wharf, I didn't...
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
But the water company, I was replaced on, but that's okay. We'll leave it alone. Okay, any others?
As, quick question, as we're, we're talking about committees and such, the planning commissioners that we appoint from different wards, are there any, the citizens that we have outside of just the city council, are there any, do you guys know what I'm talking about? The planning commissioners? Planning commission, yeah.
The planning...
The, are there any vacancies currently, or how's that, how's that, that board?
No, currently we have a full commission.
And is, and what are the terms for each person? Do you guys know? How does that, all that work for, in terms of terms and?
The regional planning?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, the planning commission members are appointed for a four-year term. And we actually do, as of, I think, last week, have a resignation of one of our members, Buzz Harris, who moved out of the city of Reno. So you should be seeing his resignation form come through, so that'll be on a future agenda for appointment to refill his position.
And typically, does each ward have somebody appointed to that commission, or?
Um, the way it's worked in the past is the liaison for the planning commission would bring forward names to the city council, trying to make sure that there was diversity amongst the wards, as well as, um... Just basically as much diversity as we could have in the makeup of the board, but, yeah, we try to represent the wards.
Sure, okay, just trying to get some clarity. And how many people sit on that, just?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
I, I think along those lines, now that we've set all our own appointments, this is why I was caught off guard on the others. I wouldn't mind having a list of all the citizens' ones and the terms and the vacancies, so that we can think ahead of time of, you know, what's expir, and I know it's not you, it's, it's the clerk's job, what's expiring, uh, what can, can you bring that? Sure. Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Like a master.
Yeah, who's on it, when their terms expire, that'd be great.
I can do that.
Would that take more than two hours? Mr. Manager? No, okay. Any other appointments, or any other things that we need to work on? All right, identification for mayor and council items for the next agenda?
Uh, Mayor, I have a few. I saw on the October 24th agenda that someone from RTC was gonna make a presentation on the impact fees issue, and I think that item got pulled. I was wondering if we could have that presentation to us. My other issue is, you know, we've been in boot camp on the whole range of, it's basically an orientation for the new majority of the city council. And when we sat through the finance boot camp, I was particularly impacted by the discussion of the debt portfolio of the cities. It's big, and I think it would be helpful to me to have it a second time, because it's complex. And also, in a public forum, so that, you know, we have a lot of constituencies who are saying, oh, we need this capital, this capital, baseball, whatever. I just, you know, for me, coming on new, the lens through which I look at the responsibility as a council member fiscally is what our obligations are. And the debt is so big and so complex, and particularly, I understood from the finance director that there may be, be in the first or second quarter of this year, some debt restructuring issues coming out. And so, rather than we go micro on a part of the debt portfolio, I'd like to go macro in a public setting, so we all understand what are our obligations and where we stand on those. So I would like, you know, I don't want, you know, with the RTC, you know, maybe further down the way, but if they're ready to go. But on this one, I, I, and I also don't want staff to go to any extra work, but if we could do that prior to one of those other ones coming through, or sooner, that would be helpful to me.
Mr. Manager, are you planning on doing that at our planning retreat in, in January? Which is a public meeting? Are you planning on doing that?
We're, we're in early discussions on the strategic planning retreat, but preliminary, at least, the discussions that we've had was to not go into as much of the finance stuff that we did last time. So I don't think it would hurt for the council to, to have a presentation on the, the debt portfolio and where we're at, and what we're looking at. Because Councilwoman Breckus is right, there is a portion of that portfolio that we are looking at to, to refinance. So I think it would be good for the entire council to hear that.
I agree with Jenny completely, and I think that, I think what we're looking for, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but it's like an executive summary. We're not looking for, you know, six-page...
I just was trying to determine if you already had it scheduled for our, our retreat.
We don't, we're taking a little...
Then we do need to do that.
We don't, we're taking a little bit different tact on the, on the retreat this time, trying to focus more on the strategic plan than just on the finances. So I think it would be helpful to have that presentation prior to the strategic planning process.
And we could have it at the council meeting, okay?
That would be great.
All right.
Okay.
You had something else?
No, that, that's all that I have.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you had three or four.
Well, the first was the impact fees. That was one.
Do you have something, Naomi? Anybody else got anything you want on the next agenda? All right, any liaison reports? Ms. Breckus, you have any? Uh, Ms. Zadra? Ms. Sheevy?
Nope.
Oscar?
Nope.
Well, let's go down to any reports on conferences and professional meetings? Yes?
Uh, someone did send me a webinar announcement of, for elected officials on how to kind of dialogue with police and fire on their service issues, and I'll pass that on if other people want to listen in on an ICMA webinar.
Okay, that'd be great.
ICMA, International City Management Association, they're pretty much a resource for...
All right, any other conference or reports? Okay, now we'll go to approval, which one, L4? Approval of reallocation of $304 from council donation fund to the city of Reno Business License Division for special event permitting costs associated with the community outreach. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor say aye. Those that, motion carries unanimously. Now, council, we have an item on F1 that we had a problem with, we need to, I need a motion to reconsider F1.
Move to reconsider item F1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, motion carries unanimously. Council, item F1.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, yes, on item one, and the annexation with respect to Jackson Food Stores, there, the notice, the agenda notice is only for the annexation, and inadvertently, in the proposed motion was also the initiation of a zoning change amendment. Since that wasn't properly noticed, we would ask you to reconsider your motion omitting the portion regarding initiation of zoning map amendment to establish zoning on it, and we'll get that done for you pronto, right away. And I guess the additional question is, if possible, could you put it on as an additional future item?
Yes. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Right, we'll, we'll get you a, a staff report and an addendum to the agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion and second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Public comment, any public comment, guards? Have none? We'll go to my favorite motion, oops, excuse me, you, Mr. Hawkins, come on up.
Ed Hawkins, Ward 4, and I'm chairman. My clarification is that F1 passed for the annexation, is that correct?
That was the intent of my request of council, was to have the annexation proceed, simply not the zone change proceed at this point.
And the zone change will be on the next meeting, probably?
Yes.
Excuse me, Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager, if the initiation goes on next week, on December 12, we would have the zone changed to Planning Commission first meeting in January.
Okay. Any other questions about it? Motion? Did you need a motion on that, Marilyn?
No, what you did was fine.
Okay, good, all right.
Thank you.
My favorite motion, adjournment. Oh, you made a motion to adjourn? Who's gonna give me a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.